Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the public session. We'll have a report of actions taken in closed session.
Yes, the City Council considered in closed session those conferences with real property negotiations which are listed on the agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you, John. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Grunmeyer and then the invocation by Spencer Parrish from Beacon Hill Assembly of God.
(Pleading) My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Spencer? No? Yeah. Jeff, would you mind doing an invocation for us, please?
No.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening just first to thank you for who you are. In this Christmas season, we celebrate the birth of your Son. Thank you that we can gather together in a free country. And thank you for your blessings that you've bestowed upon our country and on our town, on our leaders and on our residents. Thank you that we can gather freely and discuss things that are important to our city, the issues and the ordinances and all the different things that go on to keep this town running. You've blessed us with so many natural resources and so many wonderful things that we have that we want to enumerate. But, Lord God, we just thank you that we can gather freely again and that we would discuss these items impartially, with truth, without emotion, that you would guide us, that you would guide our leaders, that you would watch over and protect us as a town. We thank you for all your blessings, and we ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
At this time, I'd like to ask council to consider adding an item to the consent calendar. Andy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that an item be added to your agenda for today. This is an item that has come to the attention of city staff since the agenda was published. And this item requires action by the City Council before your next scheduled City Council meeting. And this item deals with the re-award of a contract that was previously awarded by the City Council.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Mayor Portemhappen?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't know if you said it or not, that, by the way, was added as a consent calendar, item G.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, item 2G. Okay, we have a couple of presentations. I'd like to do a presentation with the Navy and Norco and Kevin. Would you join me up front, please? And Tony, Commander?
Now, you have to, you do have to know, by the way, that it was declared U.S. Naval Hospital Norco on that day, and they changed the name in February of the next year. But as you know, we were a naval hospital, became the second largest on the West Coast, very, very big hospital, three hospitals, five satellites. They closed it for about six months in 1949, reopened part of it, and then it became a, the Navy's primary fusing and missile guidance laboratory. And in 1964, weapons assessment, which is underappreciated, was born right here in Norco, first time in the history of the military. And we're very proud of the fact that that's what you guys do today. We're very proud that the Navy is in Norco. We love it, I love it when I see the Navy and Norco signs everywhere, and we appreciate that. And so, we just, we want to thank you, we want you to know that we support you, and that we're a Navy county. So, thank you very, very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
This is a plaque honoring it, and...
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Trying to step towards it.
Yeah, absolutely.
First of all, as mentioned, my name's Commander Eric Franzen. I'm the executive officer for Naval Weapons Station Seal Beach, Det Norco and Det Fallbrook. On behalf of Captain Donkey, our commanding officer, he couldn't be here this evening to accept the certificate, he's on leave, enjoying some time off with his family. But on behalf of him, myself, our Det Director, Mr. Winicky, and the rest of the men and women at Naval Weapons Station Seal Beach, thank you for their certification and for this honor. We do appreciate the air of the Naval Hospital here in Norco. We appreciate the new era now, as Mr. Bash mentioned, of the weapons assessment of NSWC. And we especially appreciate the support that we receive from the city and from the community. It is really certainly heartfelt. In fact, Mr. Winicky and I enjoyed a little bit of that this evening as we were out at a, can I say it?
Polley's.
Yeah, we were out at Polley's Pies. I don't know if we're pulling for Polley's Pies, we had dinner there today. And a patron graciously picked up our tab tonight. And that's the second time that I've been out in uniform and had somebody pick up my tab. And Tony and I were discussing Metro City or some other larger Navy bases that were, I guess, a dime a dozen, and they get so used to us. But here, we really do feel the love and the support of the surrounding community and the city. So, thank you all for that and for this presentation.
Thank you, sir.
The owner of Polley's is a Navy man, and what we thought we'd do is, this is from 1946, I just found this like two days ago, and you guys can sit down and watch it, but it, this is Spike Jones, and the captain is Captain Albright, that's how I was able to pinpoint the date. But I figured Spike Jones is a good way, it's no comment, but it's a good way to happen at the Navy base right in front of the Old Norconian.
Thank you.
Spike Jones, we are happy to count you as our friend and to welcome you as the city's slickers of the U.S. Naval Hospital at Corona this wonderful afternoon. You know we're going to have a grand time.
Thank you very, very much, sir.
And thank you too, music lovers. We'd like to start our show off this afternoon with a beautiful symphonic arrangement entitled "Hacha Cornia."
So, just a little piece of history, thank you, Navy and Norco.
Next, we have a business appreciation honary for Act One Construction.
Is Act One here?
Don here.
No.
Scott, do you want to, should we just reschedule it? Let's go ahead and reschedule it, okay? Would that be all right? But I appreciate you coming out. Can we do that, Cheryl? Unless Don comes running in in the next five, 10 minutes, okay, Scott? City Council business items as follows: City Council Communications Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. Berwin, do you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, I reported two or three meetings ago that they're going to close the downtown bus station in the city of Riverside. They decided there's too much traffic and confusion and everything, so RTA is working on their connecting points now where they'll just change buses at different intersections in the downtown area by UCR all the way back up to Main Street, Market Street. And they think that that'll help ease the congestion because Greyhound is moving out of that area. They've been trying to move into Rupa, I don't know how that's going. But also on Vector, the only thing that I got to report on it is that they're still amazed that this year we had less cases of West Nile in our district than we had last year. I think this year we had something like six. Last year it was way up around 80 or 90, and they don't know why the drop, but everybody's pleased with that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no unload meeting this month due to the holidays, so we'll be meeting in January. And then, since our last council meeting, I was honored to be in the parade of lights with the alumni, so that was fun. Went with Kevin and Ted to this swearing-in of our new assembly member over in Corona, and then also attended the blue light ceremony with Ted and Berwin as well.
Thank you. Ted?
I attended the new film festival meeting with Kevin, who did it over the phone, since he didn't want to get us all sick, but I'll let him talk about it. Tended the employee function here in City Hall, where the annual appreciation dinner, and we have a good bunch of staff, all the other City Council members. Also, the California Rehabilitation Center, their advisory meeting was last week, they're still working on their accreditation. And one of the things that most people don't know, and I want to give them some kudos, is they do through the Salvation Army, an Angel Tree program, working for gifts. This is where they use funds that come off of the inmate welfare program. Those are funds that go there through that. And they also, part of the staff over there, at the Corona-Norco Settlement House, did a large food drive. So, kudos to those people over there for doing it. And of course, they also got recognition for having several church services at the prison over this past, in December. We just had the Navy here on their 75th, and we did their annual walk-through, the advisory board or the Historic Properties Board, along with staff and the Lake Norconian Club. I really appreciate what the Navy's been doing lately to try to preserve the historic buildings over there. I know we go toe-to-toe with them on certain things, but I guess they're really trying, and that's, that means a lot to me, that they're at least trying to keep it as historic as they can. They did talk about one new project that they're going to be doing, and don't get scared if you see a cell tower go up there, okay, on their property, if it's on the, Andy, was it going to be on the, it's on the west end?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the west end, on a hill. It's not going to be real big, they're not going to make it real big, but if you see it, that's in their future. Thanks to Robin, she threw me out in the rain last Friday, and I have to appreciate what her and her sister and the other staff at the Norco High FFA program, because she had us evaluating several students through town on their projects. And I ought to say that UC, they talk about all the college kids, and you had to get college education, what they're doing there to help these kids out, prepare for life, is tremendous, especially in their programs, the metalworking program, the welding program, the livestock raising program. It's changed a lot since I was in school 40-plus years ago, so I give you credit, Robin, you and your sister are doing a good job on those kids, getting them to, and they have a lot of good goals. Final one is to continue with our ad hoc accessory building committee. We're getting to the point where wrapping that up. Hopefully, with Greg and the two planning commissioners, we'll see something in January that we're going to finally do, some final touches on, and Andy will probably see that first part of September or maybe at a council meeting, so it comes back to us.
What I plan to do with that was the ad hoc committee has its last meeting, which we expect will be January 4th. I plan to have a study session, joint session of the City Council and the Planning Commission to go over the material.
Okay. All right. That concludes my presentation, Mayor. Thank you.
Kevin?
Actually, to Kiwanis, I hope the whole doorway to John Tabaloni and Chuck Washington, I haven't even talked to Andy, I've been out for about a week. They're trying to create a homeless, a way of combating homelessness through nonprofits and faith-based organizations, and so they've made me the contact point, I'm not sure why, but anyway, I'll be doing that and bringing that back to Andy, and then also contacting the Lions Club, Kiwanis Club. We don't really have that big of a problem here in Norco, except we have a hidden one. We have a lot of veterans, and we have a lot of Norco College students who apparently live in their cars while they're going to school. And so, the Kiwanis sort of began to address that, in fact, we did, because we have a lot of college professors that are at that college, and it's become kind of a big deal. So, I just got the email this morning, and I'll be passing that on to Andy. The Film Festival, March 24th, 25th, on the 24th, we'll be getting as many veterans as possible to be, to speak at Norco High School in small groups about their experiences, that's veterans from all conflicts, wars, peacetime, wartime. And then, on the 25th, we'll be having two films, and then have a, like a symposium with Vietnam veterans, and the theme of that will be remembering Vietnam. And we'll be honoring some of the Norco High teachers on that day too, who served in Vietnam, and then later went on to have great careers at Norco High School. We're beginning to do the stained glass project now over at the CRC, they've been incredibly open to us fixing seven stained glass windows. I've got over 30 people now, we're going to be running tours and find people who have sponsored the repair of those built during World War II. Very stunning, stunning glass that is collapsing of its own weight. The warden over there has been incredibly gracious in all of that. I was well enough to attend the 75th birthday of the Navy's anniversary, and what was, what's really, there's been a complete change, and I don't know if it's the new commanding officer or what, but all of a sudden, they're now embracing the history of the base, and they've made a commitment that they're going to do everything they can to honor that history and to try to honor those buildings and such. In the meantime, in a very indirect way, the head of the ACHB, which initially ruled against us, inadvertently let us know they knew we were right, and so now there's some sort of change at the federal level in which they know we're right, but they don't know how to overturn a state historic preservation officer. So, there's a group in Riverside that's now involved in doing all that. So, it's, it's all good, and it's all for the positive, and what's nice is that, well, we can't, we don't want to stop everything they're doing there, at least as they go through, they're respectful to what occurred there. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, this week I also attended the ad hoc committee on accessory buildings and our employee luncheon last week, and just wanted to comment what a great bunch of employees we have and how hard you all work. With that, we'll move to City Council consent items. Does any, well, I'd like to pull item 2G. Does any other members wish to pull any items? 2C?
2F, Mayor.
2F. Entertain a motion to approve the rest?
You get it, Robin? Let's take them that.
Councilmembers Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Portemhappen?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move to item 2C.
Is there some way that, I see that, even though I don't really have a problem with the 4A, which is a site plan, the 320 square foot patio cover, is there some way that may, because it's a 3-2 vote, is there some way, Steve, that we can get maybe some more notes, or we can get, maybe get minutes from that meeting, a little bit, get minutes from that so we know? I don't have a problem with the vote, I just would like, whenever I see a 3-2, I kind of want to know why the two dissented. And that's all.
Do you want me to explain?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
What happened on this one, it was a, it was not a public hearing because the accessory building was so small, but what happened was, the way the lot is configured, the pool is directly behind the house, and the open animal area was directly adjacent to the pool, but the coping of the pool overlapped into that open animal area by about a foot, foot and a half. And then, the accessory building was on the other side of the pool. The two that voted against it didn't like that the coping of the pool went into the open animal area. The location of the accessory building really wouldn't have changed anything, but that's why the split vote.
So, the pool's already a done deal, I mean, it's already encroaching, and the accessory building had nothing to do, okay. That's all, thank you very much. Motion to approve?
Councilmembers Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Portemhappen?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Go to item 2F, Ted?
Yeah, Chad, I just have one quick question on that. And that is, the sewer lift station 10, where's that?
You asked me the question, I didn't, I don't know exactly where it's at.
Okay, all right. Here's a question you may ask, what is the age of that pump?
Don't know the age of, the old facility was, one of the original facilities was built as part of the Rickra plant, so the Rickra plant is about 30 years old, 20 years old, so it's, it's at least 20 years old, I would guess, the actual facility. The pump's age, I think it's the original pump that was there, the one that we're looking to replace. The other pump number one was replaced about a year and a half ago.
Okay, so this is, and the reason I'm asking is, as our, as you know, as our infrastructure ages, how many of these are we looking down the road?
Pretty much any of the facilities that are below ground, and this is one of those facilities, and all the Rickra lift stations, there's three, that go into the forced main that goes to the Rickra plant, this was part of the original design. All these are below-ground stations, we do not design any more below-ground stations, so when these get replaced completely, everything will be below ground. For right now, the initial improvement is simply to do a submersible pump so that if the drywell floods, it doesn't damage the pump this time. Eventually, we may do the same with the other pump, just until the point in, because there's not a need right now to replace that station, it's more down, probably five, 10 years down the road, where we actually might say, okay, let's, let's go ahead and put everything above ground, redesign it. So, right now, we're simply saying we need to get this well, replace as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, there's 16, 18 lead time just to get the pump. And then, we may go back and then replace the other pump, because the point is, is if it does flood in that, in that box again, the other pump will get damaged. We'll still have one working pump, because this submersible pump will function. Depending on how much that dry well floods, it also destroys our electrical equipment. And that's the whole point of redesigning, is all the electrical equipment will be above ground, the pumps will still be submersible, but all our other equipment will be above ground. So, at most, what we might do is a partial replacement where we move all the electrical above ground, but keep the facility the same as far as the underground structure. And that's, but again, right now, at this time, we're not looking at that as a immediate need to replace in the next five years.
Okay, so that'll be in the future.
Absolutely.
CIP, and, okay, and then, I guess, as this pump, we're going to take it and we're going to, the old pump out, and then we're going to have that as a backup in case something does happen, so we don't...
The old pump doesn't work anymore.
Okay.
It's not working, we're operating off of one pump, which is a significant issue.
Okay, all right, that's what I was...
That's why the urgency of getting this done prior to coming to council is we need to get it ordered, because it's a significant, almost three to four month delay.
Okay, all right. I don't even have the questions there. Would you go through?
I have a question. I'm sorry. Wait one sec. That's somewhat of my concern is on the redundancy. Would we be better off ordering two pumps?
It's just more of the desire not to spend more than we intended at the time. We could, in theory, and replace them, if we want to do that now. We'd more rather plan on, we just really want to take care of the one issue and move on, recognizing we would have one functioning pump in and working, we can take our time getting the other one, it wouldn't be an urgent thing, because we'd have one submersible pump working, and we would, we would replace it later on. We could do it now, but I'm not recommending it this time, because I want more time to actually evaluate the site, find out what overall changes we may do, because we may end up deciding that we're going to oversize and change the whole spec of our pumps, and we might want them larger. And then, that becomes an issue, we now have, the pump I replaced is...
In our backup.
Is smaller, we might pull both of them out at that point, and then have a backup that's a little smaller, but we go larger. I just, I want more time to really, to look at, find out what we really need to do in the next 15 years to have a functional station that's going to last us, you know, 30.
Okay. Today, then, you would be comfortable with the redundancy that we're creating?
Yes, we, yes, I mean, because again, our goal is just to have the secondary at this point, the one that's there is working fine, it's not an issue, but we recognize if that one fails, we're in a much, much bigger issue operationally.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin, your motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Councilmembers Bash? Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Mayor Portemhappen?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 2G, Andy?
Chad.
Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, appreciate you adding this item on to the consent agenda. We became aware last week, late last week, that Hemborg Ford was unable, or realized they had, their subcontractor had not added in the emergency lighting fixtures that we wanted on our new truck that we had ordered, which is about $6,000 that the consultant, the subcontractor hadn't counted on. They made us aware of that, the Hemborg Ford and the subcontractor tried to figure out a way to maintain the existing pricing, they could not. So subsequently, the Hemborg Ford wrote us this week that he had to withdraw his bid to provide the truck. So, we immediately contacted the second and third bidders to see if they were still willing to hold their pricing, it's been several months now since we awarded the contract. They initially, the second bidder initially said they would not, unfortunately, because they needed to rebid some of their external components, because they didn't control those, so they would have to go out and probably rebid. And they also mentioned that they would have to, if they were able to do it, they'd have to have the PO for pricing related to Ford's requirements before the end of the year. So, we moved on to the third bidder, he said he would hold his pricing, and that was as of yesterday. As of today, we got a call from the second bidder saying he would hold his pricing. But both, both vendors needed the PO by the end of the year for their purposes. So, the urgency issue is the fact that we need to get this done now, otherwise, basically, they won't hold their, and we'll probably have to just rebid everything. We have a reasonable price, they're very close to the original bid that was by Hemborg original bid that was by Hemborg Ford, and we think it's reasonable to move forward on that. We just have to bring this forward now to, in order to enact that PO before the end of the calendar year.
Any questions of staff?
Chad, when I was in the Sheriff's Department, it was not unusual for us to take our emergency lighting, emergency equipment from a car that was going out of service, unit that was going out of service and putting it on to a new unit. They don't do this here.
Normally, it wouldn't be. Usually, by the time you replace the vehicle, a lot of the features and, I guess, operational features have changed or they've improved. You know, I'd say there's, there's new, better equipment that you can put on, that's, and it's more worthwhile than long-term, because a lot of it just gets beat up. It's damaged. You've got to pay somebody to take it off one truck, put it on another truck, and it's used. And there's no guarantee. And the problem is, is we would probably have to do that, hire a subcontractor to do that. And then they're not going to guarantee that work because it's used equipment. At least for us, as far as, at least for the first, I think it's the first year, they will warranty the electrical related to, the improvements is put on, the subcontractor warranties it, so if anything fails. So there's a lot of issues with putting used material. If it was just a spotlight thing, we're putting on a truck and putting, and putting on, take one truck, another truck, it was usable, we could do that, and we'd do it on our own and try to wire it effectively. But this is whole house, equipping the truck from the lights on top to the tail, the front, emergency beacons. You really need somebody who's going to be qualified to do that. And you really want new equipment that is meeting current codes, because the codes do change too on how the lighting is supposed to flash and the effectiveness.
Okay. The only reason I ask is, like I said, the Sheriff's Department, we didn't buy brand-new emergency light equipment, get transferred over to another unit. But if, if they don't have an outlet to do that or a provider to do that, then I understand that. All right, thank you. No further questions.
I have a question, Chad, that the two bids, downtown Ford sales in Sacramento and then Lake Chevrolet in Elsinore, they're basically $70 apart. I don't know if I feel comfortable with the dealer in Sacramento that kind of plagiarized around a little bit about, you know, I need a PO right now if I want to hold my prize, or I got a check here, a check there. Plus, if we ever need any recourse, would we be better off going to Elsinore on this?
A couple of things on that. Again, since this was a bid, I don't know legally whether we can go to third bidder, since this was an open bid process, I would defer to the city attorney what all our options are. In regards to whether we're better off, I mean, these, this particular bidder, it's the state's contract, and that's who this bidder is. The state does open bidding for equipment, and this was the bidder. A lot of times, these bidders will end up using a local entity because they want to deliver it, they don't want a shipping cost to go to Sacramento.
Right.
So I'm, my assumption is they're partnering with a local group to provide the truck and get it equipped. So I don't have any concerns with that. Again, it's, we don't pay them anything until we get it, we get it, we view it, we inspect it, and then we sign off and say, you know what, it meets all our criteria to functions. Like anything, it's all warranted through, as far as the truck itself, through Ford. And then we deal with the warranty regarding the additional equipment added on through the vendors that provided it.
I'm just kind of looking at it from, all the other bidders are local.
Yeah, I just don't know the legal aspects, whether we can skip over a bidder.
Well, it's not a public works contract, so we're not looking at the public contracts code. Our municipal code requires that for purchases in excess of $25,000 that we actually bid it, and it sets forth the criteria for bidding and obligates us to award to the most responsible bidder.
I just thought for $70 more, we could get a Chevy.
And actually, the Lake, like, the Lake Chevrolet was the person who provided our last truck. They won the last bid.
Yeah. Any other questions, Robin? Entertainer motion?
Councilmembers Bash, Grunmeyer, Hannah, Mayor Portem Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll now move to public comments. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address the council on any item not on the agenda. Cheryl, do we have any cards?
No cards.
Okay. Item 5A, ordinance number 1011, second reading. Motion to approve.
Second. Councilmembers Bash, Grunmeyer, Hannah, I'm sorry, Epstein?
Yeah, I'll work here.
Mayor Portem Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 6, discussion action items, 6A, proposed speed hump policy review. Public Works Director, Chad?
Thank you, Council. This is the second part of the speed hump discussion. As you may recall, we previously had brought forth to the council a draft speed hump policy. We reviewed that policy, and there was a desire for additional information, some changes. And I'm going to go through that right now as far as explaining kind of where we're at this point. So you should have a presentation in front of you, plus it's on the screen. It was. There we go. Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. So just a quick review. I know we've reviewed some of these topics before, trying to only highlight the things that we were struggling with as far as trying to get a consensus on. So just to highlight, we have existing traffic measures we work on. We have focused traffic enforcement that's done by the Sheriff's Department. We have roadway marking improvements, which is the restriping we're doing throughout the city, which is new striping and new additional postage of signs. We've done a rest in red on North and Crestview, which has been effective. We're dynamic feedback signs that we've introduced on North, which is, again, has been effective. We're actually, our data is now showing that we are reducing those speeds going north and, or east and west to 40 miles an hour on average. So it's not perfect, but it's on average, so which is a significant difference because they were about 50 miles an hour, I think the average was. So it's having an impact. And then we've actually recently added into our repertoire the rectangular rapid flashing beacons that we have in front of the elementary school on Temescal. Unfortunately, we did just happen to remove all those because we had one individual decide to run into it and purposely remove the batteries out of it, so we replaced. We took them all out of the ground temporarily until we go back and find a better way to secure them from folks damaging them to try to steal the, the equipment off of it. So we learned a little bit as we put these things in, and we find better ways to keep our infrastructure and equipment protected. So, so if you don't see that out there over the next week, that's because we removed them just to protect them at this time. So our speed hump policy, again, there currently is not a speed hump, speed table policy existing within the city for City of Norco. Staff researched multiple agencies and existing speed hump policies to see what they've done, and there's, and every agency has done a myriad of different ways of doing it. There's not one state recommended way to implement a speed hump policy. The draft policy was reviewed by police and fire, and therefore the, and I'd say when it was reviewed by them, they reviewed to see if the policy itself, they had any issues with it, was being proposed, how it would be implemented. I will emphasize that they did discuss in the review session, we actually had, that they were not in favor of the speed hump policy in that it has impact with response times. It was re, also reviewed by staff committee, and again, they were in favor of how the policy was written and how it would potentially be implemented. And then we, we also reviewed the actual policy that was finalized as a draft with council, and the council provided their review and provided us comments in September. So finally coming back, just to give a quick view, what we're talking about with speed bumps, speed humps, if folks are not familiar, just did a quick schematic. This is, again, it's not a speed bump, which is usually no more than three feet wide. This is, these are more like 12 feet wide, and it's more gradual going over intended to slow down vehicles. Speed table's a little bit different in that it's just more flat on top and a little bit wider. But it's meant to encourage people to slow down because it's a physical impediment that's in the road. The council's concerns, what they highlighted, and it was in, is in staff board, was we initially were promoting to have a $500 fee for the application, because we wanted to make sure that there was, staff's concerns were to make sure there was a buy-in from the community in that street that they really wanted this. And we didn't just get inundated with a bunch of requests that weren't really serious about it. And the application fee really pays for the consultants that would need to do to the traffic counts that we'd want to do to make sure and validate that this is a street worthy of at least the number of vehicles that were traversing on that road, that that was the issue. So that was one element we had. The council felt that we should probably eliminate that application fee. And it was a request was eliminate the residents paying for construction, the speed hump, signage and striping. Again, one of the elements we had in the original draft was to have the residents, again, pay for that infrastructure. So it was really something that they were requesting to benefit their immediate area, is that, again, part of their buy-in to make sure they're serious about it is that they pay for it. A lot of agencies do do that. Some agencies do 50-50, and some agencies just pay for it themselves. It really just depends on, I would assume for most of it, whether it's a budgeting thing. Our concern regarding this, by making them pay for it, is really, it's an additional cost for the city in trying to pay for these as they might be implemented. Each one's about $2,000, $2,000 to implement per speed hump, because it includes, not only the asphalt, includes the, the striping that we want to do to identify there's a speed hump there, signage, gives you want to give people advance warning. Because again, although you're trying to slow people down, you're also trying to warn them something there in case they get in an accident. They want them to come back to the city and say, hey, I didn't know there was something there. So we have to do our due diligence. So we, in the draft, in the revised point you have in front of you, we took out the, the cost to the residents as far as them paying for the speed humps, having put in. And there was a request to, because originally we were making it at least a requirement that street had to have 2,000 vehicles minimum on that street per day in order to be considered for a speed hump. It was a request to lower that down to 500, so we did that. And that the policy be consistent with the city circulation element. So we also did an investigation in the, in the circulation element to find out what requirements may be in, in the existing established circulation element that was adopted by the city. And then also finally, prepare maps outlining streets not eligible for speed humps due to CAL FIRE or bus routes. One of the, one of the issues that was consistent in most jurisdictions that I, we reviewed, was that bus routes were not eligible because the fact that most buses, large or small, mainly the large, are solid axle, and they have no seat belts. So that when drivers are going over those speed humps, kids get launched. So that was the premise of, they want to eliminate that factor. So on known bus routes, they were basically saying you couldn't have any speed humps on those routes. One of the other concerns related to the CAL FIRE was, again, their response time on designated routes or areas that they respond to the city, is that it can and potentially impede their ability to respond to the fire in a timely manner. So what we tried to come back with was any type, a couple maps that'll show kind of where those areas are. So our staff's findings regarding the circulation element, we did find that there is an actual policy, 1.17 of the city's circulation plan states that cities should not encourage traffic calming, street closures and unnecessary stop signs at the expense of emergency response. So this would, and again, the intent of the speed humps is a traffic calming measure that also impedes, potentially could impede emergency response. So based off of that, it would appear the policy would seem to eliminate the use of speed humps in the City of Norco because potentially impedes emergency response vehicles, whether it's perceived or real, but it's just a possibility. This is the map that I was able to put together with the help of the, the school district. I talked with their staff. They gave me several maps that outlined their current bus routes. We consolidated all those maps, and these are already established bus routes where they, the vehicles drive to pick up children. So these are the large buses. They also, which not shown on this map, they have also the smaller buses that pick up special needs kids and folks that need, pick up during non-regular hours that are not shown on here. And those may or may not cover other areas that have not been indicated. But you can see, at least in the bus routes, it's pretty much covering about, you know, two thirds to three quarters of the city as far as would eliminate primary roads that are 25 miles or less. And again, speed humps are intended for roads that are 25 miles per hour or less. Anything above that, speed humps wouldn't be considered. So these gives you a perspective of what, where streets were probably eliminated off the bat, if we accepted that policy within the draft policy of that bus routes would not be eligible. And I was able to get this information from CAL FIRE. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get an actual map that showed defined routes that they normally travel. Best they could do is give me their response areas. So this highlights all their responses that they've done. And I think this was 2015 time period, and all the different levels of response. I know it's difficult to see, but the colors will highlight based off whether it's a fire or medical alert, hazmat issue. But it kind of shows, obviously, they respond all over the city. So based off of those two maps, you know, it clearly shows there's a lot of activity between the bus routes and CAL FIRE that would seem to eliminate maybe the realistic possibility of really doing speed humps if our goal is to not to impede either bus traffic and/or, or emergency response. Staff's concerns at this point, what, based off of our findings, is, you know, the potential reduction in emergency response times, staff time and cost to evaluate each speed hump request, the cost for design and construction of each speed hump, the ongoing maintenance and costs for, for the city to maintain those speed humps and restriping, signage, replacing the speed hump. It may not reduce the speeds as residents expect. I mean, the reality is, is these are, these are not, these are things that drivers get used to, and they learn how fast they can go over them. And it's not that they're slowing down, taking a good low speed. They just, as long as the bottom of their car's not bottoming out, they, they go over them. But again, it's, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. It could divert traffics to other streets, thus moving the problem to somebody else. That's a common issue that folks have. And the way our, our streets are structured, they could easily go one block down and go up and avoid all that infrastructure. Now that neighborhood has the problem. Signage and, and, and striping that we put in could be objectionable to residents because a lot of folks think that they're just going to put the speed hump in, and it'll be striped on the speed hump. Well, we would actually put it, both striping before, warning people about it, and basically pointing out speed hump ahead, you know, probably 50 to 100 feet ahead. In front of that, they're also going to have signs, and when they see all that's there, they kind of view that, hey, my street's kind of looking ugly now. Noise levels definitely do increase because if it is doing its job, people are decelerating and they get the speed hump, and then they accelerate right after they get past it. So you do hear car noises is when people are stopping and starting again. So that is a common thing you'll hear. So noise can increase. Potential reduction in property values, again, because the aesthetics, and some folks may not be interested in buying a home that has all that busyness in the street. So it could potentially, it could potentially, some, some agencies have highlighted that as potential negative, so I chose to repeat that here. And then also, we've had issues in the past where people swerve around that type of speed hump and go into the trail to avoid it. And so as we design things, we would certainly have to make sure that if there is an opening, because we don't have defined curb and gutters in most of our streets, we would want to put some permanent physical impediment, bollards or things like that, so that physically it would, it would incentivize people not to go into the horse trails to go around something. So we'd certainly want to make sure we, we designed it right. So hopefully it takes away that, that potential negative. At this point, staff's recommendations to the council is that we recommend that city council not approve the use of speed humps at T-Ville with the City of Norco at this time, primarily due to the reduction in emergency response times potential, that due to the limited number of potential streets that would be eligible for speed humps, it'd be a very small group that could potentially get it. Any conflict with the city's circulation element plan. And obviously, the bigger thing is the fiscal impact for us to review, design, install, maintain the speed humps. It's not something we are currently having budgeted, and we don't know how much we would need to augment our budget to help make sure we're properly implementing this policy and making sure it's being done effectively. However, staff, I would recommend we continue to look at other alternative traffic calming measures. We're learning more and more about what other cities do and other things that they're considering, and we're not stopping the work to come up with other alternatives. Hopefully, those alternatives are, again, match what we're trying to do as far as slowing people down but aesthetically pleasing. They're not a, a long-term maintenance cost. So there, we're not stopping our efforts to try to come up with better ideas. So our next steps at this point would be for council to either accept and approve staff recommendation, in which we would bring back a municipal code amendment indicating that the use of speed humps and tables are not allowed in the City of Norco, or approve the draft speed hump policy with any modifications you may still see fit that we do. Staff would bring back- bring back a municipal code amendment stating speed humps and tables are allowed within the city of Norco and will be administered within the guidelines outlined by the council approved speed hump policy, whichever final version is adopted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. Council have any questions to staff? Kevin?
One of the conditions of approval for the property at Corydon and River is that we put a speed hump right across the street. And I'm wondering, not, not at Corydon, but at, you know, that little development right across the street. Is that going to affect this? How does that, how do we work around this? We pass this?
Well, that development, actually there's two speed humps that were, were designed on each, each one on Corydon entrance and one off of River.
Right.
If council adopts this policy, basically, my, my recommendation would eliminate that requirement for Lewis Development to put those speed humps in. And we would basically inform them that they no longer have to put that in as a traffic calming measure.
I mean, I understand the rationale for no speed humps, but we made to deal with those people. And so I'm a little concerned that, I don't know if we make an exception there, but they were very active in, not opposing, but concerns. And one of the things that came out of that were those two speed humps. So I'm a little concerned if we just sort of now inform them, we're building it and we're no longer going to put in the speed humps. So maybe something to consider at council level. Thank you. That's all I have.
Chad?
Chad, and last time when Scott, I see you had to leave, CAL FIRE kind of put the kibosh on, on, on any speed humps or they, because of their policy countywide not to, to do that in their contract cities. In this, and I understand that, like I said, after driving up the black and white for several years, speed humps and speed tables, they are, they, they do cause you aggravation when you're driving, when you're trying to respond. That in mind, if we're not stopping the fact that you're looking at other alternative measures, correct, like restrictors and that, that also serve the same purpose, circles and that, correct?
Correct. This doesn't eliminate any other options. Just talking about that specific element, which is speed humps, speed tables, speed bumps. But it doesn't, doesn't reduce, release us from considering any other options. Medians, roundabouts, it's pretty much everything is still up to the council's discretion to come up with some idea, I mean, with staff's come up with ideas of council to consider. So this is just talking about this one element. Everything else is still, in my opinion, open for discussion.
And looking at your maps on your streets, I know that, we know that Corona Avenue has speed tables in there right now. And they're still on here as a bus route. Is there any problems after you move those?
There are four existing speed humps in Norco that I'm aware of. Again, we could leave them and just simply say they're, they're grandfathered in. With and when we ever did any type of road improvement, let's say on the Corona, they would not be put back.
Okay.
But they would remember, I don't see a need to go out and remove them. I don't think we're saying that they're a danger. It's just pointing out it's, it's creating the policy, we want to minimize any impacts, future impacts. And therefore, you know, that's why we would not put in any bus routes. But I don't think we need to go out and remove them.
Okay. Now, if we blankly said no streets, speed humps, speed tables, speed bumps or whatever, would that affect private streets? Because we do have some in town, they could still go through. These are just publicly maintained streets, right? If we're not eliminating them in a parking lots or anywhere the tenant or, and they maybe want, wanting them in their section, right?
Within private property, like shopping centers or whatnot, this has, this has no bearing on their private property.
What about private streets?
Private streets, we still, I don't, I'm not sure, John, that would be relevant.
Private streets, the, the only time that this would apply. Standards and to turn them over to the sheriff's department for enforcement, then this applies. Private streets that they only access to private properties that, and they have not asked that. This is purely private property, not unlike a parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Robert?
I don't think I really have any questions about it. I, the response times is a concern to me. I think any of us that have been in a position where you're waiting for somebody to respond, minutes seem like hours when you're the person that's there. So that's a huge concern to me. And then when we look at some of the stuff that was together, put together in the policy about how many houses have to front the street and all those kinds of things, along with the bus routes, along with all that stuff, we're talking about a very small segment of the city that could actually even be considered to have a speed hump put in. So I appreciate the time and effort of staff to look through this and come up with the policy that we've requested you to do. But I don't think I have any questions at this time.
I think staff did a good job on this report, Chad. And I agree with all the negative reasons we have on here not to put the speed bumps, the tables or whatever, because the response time is very important. And even with the tables, I went over one last week in a street going out of a parking lot. And it was a pretty big shock because you couldn't see it. It didn't have it marked or anything. And I know it would impede the emergency vehicles. So I'll agree that I don't think we need to try to force those on the citizens and everything right now. Thank you.
So my couple of questions are, with our circulation element, do we, do we certify our circulation element like we do our housing element?
No, it's adopted by the council.
Okay. When was the last time we redid our circulation element?
2000.
Okay. And recommend, the recommendation on, on, on our elements is how many years should we relook at different elements of our general plan?
We, we are supposed to update at least five of the seven required elements every 10 years.
Okay. So our circulation element is probably overdue.
It's due.
Okay, it's due. I kind of have the general consensus as the other members that, you know, with speed humps or speed tables, and I don't mean to be facetious, but the school buses are also guilty of speeding down the streets. Okay. So I think with our circulation element, and some of my concerns is that, or are, and I keep going back to innovative traffic calming, that when we looked at, you know, the CAL FIRE routes, the school bus routes, it's all the streets where we have cut-through traffic. And, and to me, that's what we need to, to look at and what we need to deal with. Because I don't want to just say, okay, we're going to ignore this and then we're all going to live with cut-through traffic. So I'm, I'm just going to press staff once again on, we need to come up with solutions that are innovative. Okay. As far as Kevin's concerns on that development on Corydon, there would have to be a way, because that was a condition of approval. All the residents, they were all in agreement of having those speed tables put in. So it would almost, to me, kind of seem, where you mentioned like, if you have one today, you'd be grandfathered in, okay? Would that not be the same scenario? That was a condition of approval of that project. The residents required it. And now, now we're looking to maybe not do that?
Yeah, it's essentially your call. I mean, what you'd be adopting, if you adopt municipal code provision which prohibits speed humps, you'd be, to use a lawyer term, applying it ex post facto, which generally you don't want to do. And so it's really intended, I think, more to be on a go-forward basis. Ultimately, if you found that you thought, and that isn't staff's recommendation, if you thought that there was some safety issue, then your avenue to remove them would be different. But absent that, there's no reason why you need to either remove those that exist or prohibit those that are in a condition of an existing project from going forward.
Are you okay with that, Kevin?
Chad, I think, yeah, I had a question. Is, you know, an alternative, is there actually a viable alternative that you could put in its place that they would be happy with? I mean, I don't know how well those medians work, to be honest, but is there something that?
I'm not sure at this point. I mean, I think, I guess what I, in regards to whether we need to do anything, we certainly don't. It's just more putting it up that by adopting this policy to not allow speed humps in the city of Norco.
Well, I'm referring to those two instances.
And I understand, I'm just saying you could have, honestly, to the developer's benefit, remove that requirement to build that. But obviously you pointed out correctly, and I wasn't thinking about as far as maybe the impact of the residents who wanted it as the conditions of allowing the developer to build. I wasn't thinking of that aspect of it, so I apologize. So we can try to work with planning to see if there's anything else that might be, could be put in and alternate that, that the community would be in favor of. If not, we can just default, say sorry, as far as you, just need to go ahead and build to your original requirements.
I'm good with that.
But there will be something there.
Yeah, I mean, the minimum would be the speed humps.
What's conditioned today?
Yes. If we can come up something that makes sense and that the residents approve, then if it's with your approval, we can move forward with that without coming back to council. Then we could just make that the new condition of, of the developer as an alternate.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So our recommendation is to provide direction. Do, do any other members have any further direction for staff? Hearing none. Do, do you understand and hear your direction? Okay.
Although it probably makes sense for you to make the motion, even though you all talked about it, to, to make a motion to second that you follow staff's original recommendation. With the exception of?
So I make a motion to follow staff's recommendation with the exception of the Corydon, to discuss Corydon speed humps. You'll either find an alternative or do the fallback position of as was proposed. But otherwise, everything else we follow.
Second?
Council members Bash, Glenn Meyer, Hannah, Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
And this will come back to you as a code amendment.
Still under discussion, action items, item 6B, completion of the water and recycled water facilities master plan. Chad?
Mr. Mayor. Okay. This is the discussion, brief discussion regarding the water and recycled water facilities master plans. The master plans are, are reports that are intended to be guidelines to help agencies understand their, their needs and for future capital improvements, you know, 20 to 30 years out. And so, real quick, we originally approved Krieger and Stewart to prepare, after 2015, to prepare two studies, an update to our 2001 water facilities master plan. So we haven't updated for quite a while. It's recommended by the state that you update your master plans every five years. We haven't done it for, for 2001. So now we're going to, we're up to date. And then to create a new recycled water facilities master plan, because as you know, that we have developed input in infrastructure for recycled water system. We currently do not have approved recycled water yet to deliver. So we're using non-polable water. And that, those pipelines are primarily right now go from the Ripper plant up Bluff to Fifth Street, all the way through Fifth Street down to the eastern side of the city, providing water to the park. I think it's the windmakin' and the, and the facilities across the street. But we, and we provide water to various facilities along the way. But we don't have approved recycled water. So that's the extent of our current infrastructure. We do have plans and part of this report will review our future growth and how we're providing water to hopefully all city facilities and also schools, college and any, probably what we hope is to the I-15 Caltrans, they want water for their side slopes, et cetera. So this report takes all those considerations of potential growth, also the LMDs areas up in the southeast portion of the city. So the project cost was $159,000. It was split evenly between the recycle, the recycled water and, or sewers, the sewer fund and, well, the water fund. And the purpose again is to review existing systems and evaluate the potential capital improvements necessary to meet the minimum operating requirements and future development, the general goals. So our focus primarily is again, to do a comprehensive study that looks at our sources, whether it's the, the polable water, recycled water, all our existing storage facilities, any treatment plants we have, all our pipelines and delivery systems, humps and wells. It looks at everything possible that, that's encompassing for that system. We analyze the operational models, various operational models based on specific conditions, because we want to understand how it's going to work in various conditions and whether it'll meet our needs. Those conditions are the minimum and max date demands, the fire flow demands. We want to make sure it can meet maximum fire flow should a fire occur in any given part of the system. Ultimate build-out, we make some projections of if we had ultimate build-out, you know, what would we need and could we meet our demands? System pressure analysis, again, do our pipelines, are they sized properly? Are they meeting the right pressure because they're undersized, because they were put in 50 years ago and they really should be a 10-inch pipe versus a 6-inch pipe that it is now. So it looks at that and kind of gives recommendations. It looks at our available sources of water versus demands. Again, do our current sources meet our demands? Will our future demands be met by existing sources? Do we need to expand those existing sources and look for alternatives? And then with this information, we use it to provide recommendation for use of water and recycled water utility improvements that we're going to do or recommend that we do. Doesn't mean we're going to, we will do them. It's the, this, part of this is ultimate build-out, which again, by the time of the end of this study, which is projected 2030, we still may not have reached ultimate build-out or use. So it doesn't mean these, these costs that we're going to discuss are going to be done. They're just recommendations you may have to do. And I would include that the CIP that we talked about in this report does not include normal replacement of CIP, i.e. just regular wear and tear of the pipes that need to replace. So there's tens of millions of dollars in, especially in the water side where we need to replace pipes that have nothing to do with this report. This port, this, mainly in this report, what talks about replacing pipelines is simply pipelines that are undersized to meet our projected demands and our pressure needs. So there's even more than what's going to be projected here. So water findings, again, nuts and bolts, we basically showed look for wells, water treatment plant improvements, booster stations, storage facilities, pipelines. Our total overall improvements projected by 2035 could be up to as much as 35, 36 million dollars. Again, doesn't mean all these will be done. The first commis here in 2016, 2020 is, most of these are, what they took in consideration was existing projects we're planning to do, which one of the big ones is our water treatment plant and building some reservoirs. So those are there, you know, we do have some well rehabs we're going to do. And some storage facilities that we're going to replace. So there's a significant amount of, of those costs are real costs that we plan to do. Recycled water findings, to give you an idea, again, these, since our infrastructure is pretty new, there's not a new, a lot of replacements can be done anytime soon. Most of this is all expansion. One of our key things was storage facilities. Right now we have no storage facility. And that's a key infrastructure that we need and we're working on trying to design and, and find a location to put that properly placed so that we have the storage to operate our system properly and maintain pressures. We have various pipelines we're going to add in, especially in the LMD areas, going up to the, down to the college. So some of the schools that are down Temescal, get all hit and try to hit all those schools, because the states do have money funding for the school districts to help retrofit their irrigation systems to recycle water. Again, it's not high demands. It's just more of the point that the states over time are going to expect and looking for us to expand our recycled water systems to, to all possible users. And the schools are a big one that the state has identified and providing funding to. So even though it's, they're not going to be big users and it'll actually cost quite a bit of money to pipe all the way down Temescal, it's just the fact of the matter that we've taken now those users off the polable demands, which is the state wants to see. Even though it's a small amount, they're not concerned about the dollars you're going to spend to get there. It's, you brought them off the polable demand long-term and they feel long-term, it will pay for itself. And that's what they want to see. You know, we would go up Amner or up side streets, maybe. You know, we would go up Hamner or up Side Streets maybe to get to our community center, and up in those areas, all the way down to Silver Lakes. At some point, we do envision and expect that the wells that are currently there are going to not function because they are impacted by the river, they have heavy sanding, and at some point they just may not become functional, and they need a backup source at a minimum, which would be the recycled water. And they could use that immediately if needed be, and they would, so they could continue to operate, not be using polable water, which would certainly cost them a lot more. So these are the general findings for recycled waters, where we're looking at, doesn't mean that, a lot of these in this first 20-year period will probably be done for sure, because these are basic bare-bone, backbone infrastructure we need. The more longer term is the expansion into lower usage areas that just, we may decide it's just not worth doing, because it's just the gain of taking people up the polable just isn't very much. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. Erwin, any questions for, I don't have staff, Robin?
Yeah.
Chad?
Okay, I guess indirectly, how much is this going to help with what was going on with our Rickra plant and trying to get back our water?
It doesn't have any impact at all in regards to, because we have the backbone infrastructure, so obviously we, let me ask it this way, we've already done the work we need to do, which is start our infrastructure and start connecting our system up to potential users, which right now is the city. If we were just getting our change of use and we didn't have the infrastructure, the change of use is pretty much useless because we couldn't provide it to ourselves. So we are in a very good position, and we've been trying to get the change of use for five years or more. So we're ready to use it, and we have what water we don't use, we have already an agreement with City of Corona for them to use that water. That agreement is five years old now and needs to be redone because it's expired, but again, it's, Corona has indicated they still have a need and desire to have water. They're also, part of that agreement is to partner, to bring our, take that water from us and with the connection we already have with them to get to take recycled water, and they're going to exchange that water for water they're going to provide up to the LMD areas, up near the golf course area, so we can start watering those areas, including the golf course, when they're ready to transition over to recycle water, because their source expires in 2020, I believe, for their well water, because they come from a different basin, and my understanding is that basin, their lease or the use of that water expires 2020. So they will be a heavy user potentially that we factored in into our report. So to your question, it doesn't impact us at all as far as this report in not getting the change of use. It certainly shows in the state that we are a system that's in place and is going to expand, and we will be able to use that water. So it shouldn't have any impact on our ability to convince the state to let us change that use of water.
Okay, so you haven't heard back from the state Fish and Wildlife on that water that's going, that we're pumping in the river now?
We, it's very slow-going. Rickra has been working with the state to get the concerns of Fish and Wildlife done. Again, we have an agreement in principle, if we can put some additional monitoring wells in, which we're trying to get access with Army Corps of Engineers at this point to drill those wells. Some of the property is on Orange County Water District property, which they have given us permission to drill a couple wells. So right now it's more of just getting Army Corps to cooperate and to allow us to get to the sites, assess them, so we get the number of wells that have been initially approved in our informal plan that Fish and Game has bought off on. Once, my understanding is once all that work is done and completed, or we can show them that we have secured the properties that we need to drill our wells, that they will, in theory, release their protests, so that, the goal is to be able to take the petition of change of use to the state without any protest attached to it. That's really what the state has actually told also Rickra, is we would rather have a clean request rather than any protest, because that will drag out the hearing process. So they want it, and so our goal has been, and Rickra has been working for quite a long time, solely but diligently, to get all the protests removed, and so that we can have a quicker process through the state. Any protests that are still attached will really bog down our likelihood of getting this, the change of use done. So we're, we all wish it was going faster, I'll say that candidly, but we're trying to be reasonable in our demands and expectations, and so far, again, all parties have been willing to work with us. The Orange County was our original, was one of the original protesters, they've come on board and released us from their protest, and now we're just working Fish and Game. So if we can get them, do our due diligence and get our conditions completed, they'll remove their protest.
The reason I ask is because you mentioned the fact that the state wants to get the schools onto the recycled water, and that's what, one of your presentations, and yet we have the state wildlife, our Fish and Game, that keeps our water. That's what I'm saying. Can they use any leverage? I know it's probably on...
Well, yeah, believe me, that has been something that we've talked about, but the general preference of the state is to not have to get involved in the local level, because they want you to kind of work it out amongst yourselves, and we're dealing with federal Fish and Game and state, so it's two entities really, and now we're doing it with Army Corps. But again, we don't think this is dead at all. I mean, we just recognize it's going slower than it should. We do believe we will get to that finish line, it's just slow-going and trying to get there, but we will get there. Because we've talked about, what if we get more involved and go to the state directly and say, hey, you're kind of being counterproductive, you're telling us to do this, but your own, federal and state organizations are prohibiting us from doing it? What's the rationale? We just concerned that may create animosity between the agencies. And right now, we're working okay together, we're getting, we're making steps. I, believe me, if it gets to the point where we're hitting a loggerhead, I think we'd have to circle the wagons and say, we need to come up with a new tact and go directly to the state and say we're, and just go through the hearing process, and say, we're trying to do what the state is mandating us to do.
You can understand, as we just did this increase on the last council session, and now we got, we have, I think it was a million gallons a day that gets dumped down into the river? Is that what it is, how much?
Oh, no, it's 6 million.
6 million gallons, yeah, okay. So almost 7 million gallons of tertiary water gets dumped into the river that's coming to recycle.
Right.
And we can't use it. That's very frustrating as far as for the residents and for, you know, this council too, and I'm sure here, that's what I'm saying, is somewhere along the line, we need to start any leverage we can use, and if we use the schools need it, and even all the other facilities in town, that's, we need to play that card somewhere.
And that is definitely open for discussion as far as at the Rickra level and the board meetings, as far as whether or not we need to have a reconsideration of our approach. But right now, I think the general has been, we've been willing to allow them, Rickra staff, to continue on their plan, and they've been showing progress, and I think we're all just waiting to see if it gives you fruition.
Okay, since the mayor just appointed me on that position, we might have to discuss longer. Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
That's the clearest, that's been explained. I've been frustrated with this for six years, and that's the clearest somebody's ever explained to something, you very much. For a while there, we were told, you know, a couple weeks, a couple weeks, a couple weeks it would be taken care of, and the reality is, is dealing with state and federal agencies is not fun, and what do you say? How much of the legal fees so far been racked up, do we know?
I don't know the quantity. I know we just did original, a change order in their, a contract to pay them more for legal fees, but I don't know the total quantity.
That hasn't been going on since I got on council in 2009, and what, four years before then or something crazy? Yeah, all right, thank you very much, that's all I have, I'm good with this.
Good report, Chad, by you and the consultant. Kind of for Ted's information on the Rickra change, that I'm going to say we're somewhere in half a million dollars in attorneys fees, and we just approved that change order for another $70,000 or $80,000. But what Chad's saying is that it's extremely frustrating, but we're trying to slowly go with this process, not to upset them. Kevin, I'm with you as far as, you know, two weeks, two weeks, you know, we'll be seeing it.
Couple weeks.
Yeah, I know, but Ted, you're in for a surprise. Chad has pulled me back because it's extremely frustrating, and you're going to enjoy every minute up there, so.
If I might, just one comment. Just the people that don't know this, essentially what happened was, is we created, we with our partners, created a system whereby we were ahead of the pipelines to utilize the water. So there was no place to put it except in the Santa Ana River. Well, once we put in the infrastructure, all of a sudden, the Fish and Game and those people came forward and they said, well, you can't turn the water off, you've created a repairing area, you've created a natural environment. And so basically, because we've done that, we're having to fight, fight to get our water back, and we have to fight nicely, which is the hard part. But that's basically what's happened, so the water, we're pumping 6 million gallons a day into the river, a water that taxpayers paid for to create. That's where we're at, for a repairing area. That's all, thank you.
You're doing a great job, Chad.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that was a good report. Cheryl, are there any cards?
No cards.
Okay. I know that, John, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the 2016 Water and Recycled Water Facilities Master Plan.
So moved.
Councilmembers Bash, Gudmeyer, Hannah, Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll go into public hearings, item 7A. This is the amendment of fiscal years 2017, 2021 Capital Improvement Program to add Hamner Avenue median improvement project to the Street Improvement Fund and Appropriate Funds. Frank.
Good evening, Archbishop Mayor and members of City Council. As you are aware, the city capital improvement program budget for fiscal years 2017 through 2021 was adopted by the City Council in June of 2016. Before you tonight is a request to amend the CIP budget to include a new project, the Hamner Avenue median improvement project. The Hamner Avenue median project is between Sixth Street and Detroit Street. The goal is to provide aesthetically pleasing entry and exit with attractive streetscape that will include trees and drought-tolerant plant material in the median. This project will be executed by Brightview under existing time and materials contract with the city. This project is consistent with strategic direction number five, improve the quality of life by enhancing public safety services. By appropriating this project, additional authorized expenditures not to exceed $75,000 will occur, which includes labor, landscaping, and onsite improvements. Funding for this project will come from the requested appropriation from the Streets Improvement Fund remaining fund balance. The estimated fund balance as of June 30th, 2017 is $820,425. That includes my report. With me tonight is Buildings and Parks Superintendent Hank Coe to answer any questions council may have in regards to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Good report. Does council have any questions to staff? Robin?
Is there already a design done, or does that take place after the approval of the project?
Mayor, Frank or Hank, is there already watering system in there, is it already approved, or is this all going to be drought tolerant plants? Okay, so is that included in this appropriation then, or would that be additional?
That will be...
Okay, and then the annual fee from Brightview to maintain it, or that'll be... Okay. All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Cheryl, are there any cards?
Yes, one card, Mayor. Patricia Overstreet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, and the council. Well, I'm beyond ecstatic to find out we're finally going to take care of our gateway. And listening to the fact that you have money to do it and you have a plan, I'd like Hank to know that there are two giant black granite boulders at the end of Corona Avenue in Sedona, if you want some more design elements, so you can get a big tractor and move them over, because I think that are in the plan to be removed anyway. You don't get a second chance to make a first impression, but I think that we're going to maybe accomplish that with finally getting this done. Even driving through Norco on the 15 freeway, I mean, it looks nice when it's cleaned, that's why keeping those on and off ramps litter free is very important. There may be, you know, millions of people that drive through here and never stop, never care about Horsedown USA, but as a citizen, I want it to look nice. I'm a neat nick, and I think that impression's important. As a citizen, I'm glad that this, the gateways are going to be fixed. Also, the two neglected medians on Hamner Avenue by AFS Printing and Stater Brothers, they really need to be updated too, maybe a rock or two and some more drought-resistant plants. And that poor pathetic canary on pine that they put in, at least they put it in, but it needs some love and attention, so I'm thrilled and look forward to seeing the final project. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
That concludes comments.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'll go ahead and close public hearing, I'm sorry, public speakers. Any further discussion? Under discussion, I'd like to compliment Frank and Hank and Parks and Rec, and we did have a meeting also with Public Works, and I'm just glad this is finally coming about that we'll finish this project. So then, then we can start on the other ones that Mrs. Overstreet suggested. Thank you.
Councilmembers Bash, Gudmeyer, Hannah, Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It will move to item 7B, ordinance number 1012, first reading.
This is the, what's before you tonight is the adoption of the update to the building code. You actually adopted one of the, one of the codes at the last meeting with the adoption of the fire code. This is the adoption of the rest of the books that go with that code, electrical code, mechanical code, plumbing code, residential code, green building code, and the actual building code itself. This was mostly done by Brian Gumpert from our Contract Plan Check Building Official Company. I don't know if he's here, he was going to be here to present the staff report, so I'll keep going, because I don't think he made it. But basically, every three years, the state updates its building code, and then basically requires jurisdictions to adopt the building code as their own. And jurisdictions are allowed to go above and beyond the minimum mandates of the building code, but they can't do anything less. So we have to at least do what the state tells us to do, and then if we can do, and then we're actually required to add amendments to it to address specific needs of the jurisdiction, whether it be earthquake potential, or in Norco, we have a greater wind load potential than a lot of communities do, so we've adjusted our building code appropriately. Basically... Basically, what you have before you is all of the codes with updated dates changing the base year from 2013 to 2016. There were a couple of other changes that I'll go through quickly. For whatever reason that I don't have an answer for, when the 2013 edition was adopted, there were some things that were left out and they needed to be, they should have been adopted then, so they're being adopted with this round. And basically, that's the administrative code and the, if I can find it, and the energy code. So these are not new to the state or the California building code, but they were not included in the building code for the city of Norco when it was approved in 2013. There's a couple of other small things that were left out when it was approved in 2013 that needed to be added, and those are being recommended to be included in the ordinance that you have before you tonight. So with that, I can answer any questions. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Steve. The Council have any questions to staff?
I have one.
Ted.
Steve, on page six, when you talk about under 15.01.080, item number 10 on there, you talk about the self-supporting port of Bucrel. It's with the changes in here, when you talk about the wind and the tunneling effect, is that our code still cover that? None of the existing or the new codes did any changes to that, correct?
Correct.
So we're still making sure that we're still at 70 miles an hour, I believe, or is it, what is it, that we have to, we want our injury port of those to withstand?
Yeah, it used to be 90 and it's 70 now. So it is 70.
So it's 70 now?
Uh huh. Well, it was with the last adoption. We're not changing, we're not changing anything that was adopted in 2013 in terms of all of the additional requirements that the city requires. Pretty much, all we're doing with this is updating the base date from 2013 to 2016.
Okay, so there's no change?
No change.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're going to need to double check on that. But these changes that, this whole area's changed into, it's 130 mile an hour winds zone for construction. I, we would never have gone from, I know when we went up to 90, it would never go back down to 70.
The, I don't know the details of what the wind load requirement is. What, if the Council so chooses to adopt the ordinance, what I can do is go back and just plug in whatever that actual number is, so.
I mean, yeah, the whole area's changed. That's, and it is going up.
Okay.
I had asked you to check on this acronym for me, CASP?
Yes.
And I still have that correct?
Yes. Yeah, and I did.
Would you spell it out for me?
Don't ask me what it stands for, but the acronym is CASP. And basically, what it is, is a certification for doing American disability requirements in the building code. And what CASP is, is a certification program for inspectors and plan checkers to be able to, not to be able to, but to enforce what's required in the building code. I spoke with our building official. It was changed, it was changed a couple of years ago whereby the, a loose interpretation of the state requirement is that each jurisdiction has to have within its staff, somebody that's certified, a CASP certified inspector. I did speak with our building official, who is on contract to us from Willdan, who is certified, a CASP certified plan checker. And the way he explained it is that the, by having him through Willdan as part of our staff, our staff then does not have to be CASP certified themselves. They basically inspect under his authority and he keeps them updated.
Okay. Yeah, because some, and this is one of my concerns with that, that some jurisdictions this next year will require residents or applicants to go out and have a separate CASP certification from a certified inspector.
Right.
And it would not be a function of the building department or any outside consultant that we would do. But there's a lot of education that goes with that. So part of the, and with this overall change is that our building inspector is given the tools for that education, along with, you know, all the code changes. And then however that certification inspection is done, like would Willdan come out to make that inspection?
They could do it one of two ways. They could send out one of their own inspectors or they, our contract building official will work directly with our inspector to make sure that he does what he has to do, depending on what the project is. As it was explained to me, we're consistent with the state requirements.
All right.
In that procedure. He also did explain that, as you stated, it's a, it's a very lengthy, hard test and it's expensive to take it and you have to update it every year and it's quite an expensive process, test process and maintenance process. And according to him, there's, statewide, right now, we only have about 1,000 that are actually certified to do it. So there's a lot of, they're working with the state right now to try and loosen up those requirements, but the way we're doing it, we're consistent right now, so.
My concern is it doesn't become an additional burden to any applicant that's building any of our residents in town. But it sounds like you're on the right track with that. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Cheryl, do we have any cards?
No cards.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to Council for any discussion and action.
An ordinance of the City Council, City of Norco, California, amending chapters 15.01, 15.02, 15.03, 15.04, 15.05, 15.06, 15.07, 15.08, and 15.60 of the City of Norco Municipal Code pertaining to buildings and construction, and adding chapters 15.13 and 15.14 for the purpose of adopting the latest edition of all California state model codes by adopting the 2016 California Building Code, including the 2016 Administrative Code, 2016 California Reference Standard Code, 2016 California Residential Code, 2016 California Green Building Standards Code, 2016 California Electrical Code, 2016 California Plumbing Code, 2016 California Mechanical Code, 2016 California Energy Code, code change 2016-08.
Councilmembers Bash, Grunmeyer.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yeah.
Mayor for Tim Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes, sir.
Motion carries.
Let's go ahead and just take a 10-minute break and then we'll move into item 8A Appeal Hearing. Meaning, item 8A Appeal Hearing, this is a conditional use permit 2016-31. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is, as you stated, an appeal of an action that the Planning Commission took to approve conditional use permit 2016-31 for the construction of a 2,400 square foot RV garage, storage, and workshop building at 3522 Broken Twig Drive. That action by the Planning Commission occurred on November 9th, 2016, and the action of the Planning Commission has been appealed to the City Council. The proposed building is metal construction with the exterior painted to match the house. And I'll just, while I'm on architecture, I'll just stay right there for a minute. It was submitted to the Planning Commission Architectural Review Subcommittee. There was concern of one about the metal construction and the other also had that concern but was okay with it being painted the same color as the house. And there were no recommendations for change to the architecture from that subcommittee. The building, the way it was proposed, it meets all of the minimum standards for the size and location of an accessory building. There was, what we did point out in the staff report is that the Planning Commission, previous to that, had adopted a resolution recommending to the City Council that the lot coverage be changed from 40% to 30%. That, of course, was never heard by the City Council. It was taken off calendar so that it could be addressed, that issue could be addressed with the accessory building ad hoc committee that's currently ongoing as we speak. Nonetheless, it was pointed out in the staff report as a reminder to the Planning Commission, even though they did remember, but part of the, part of the functions of the staff report is to report to the Planning Commission as well as to provide a good background report for people that are not familiar with what is being proposed, so that they get a background understanding. So while it was not made a finding of approval by the Planning Commission, it was put in there to remind them that that was something that they had considered in their discretion to protect animal keeping on lots in the city. Ultimately, the Planning Commission unanimously approved the project. They made all the findings that are required, in that approval, they made the findings that are required by the Norco Municipal Code for approval of a conditional use permit. The, and, and again, it was unanimous approval by the Planning Commission. So what's before the City Council tonight? If you choose to uphold the Planning Commission action, all you need is a roll call vote. If you want to change the action of the Planning Commission to approve the project, there is a resolution for approval that can be modified by the City Council as it sees fit. And then if the City Council chooses to overturn the approval and deny the project, you have a resolution for denial that is also attached. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Does Council have any questions to staff?
Yeah, Mayor.
Ted?
I was the one that pulled this anyway for review. And basically, Steve, after talking to the planning commissioners, and this, initially when I did it was the application of the 30% lot coverage. And after speaking to Alman, reading the minutes, I understand where that was. But then after speaking to Alman and the planners and reading the minutes, I'm checking here on the application for the conditional use permit. And I'm reading what was submitted and then what you write in your staff report to the Planning Commission. And the answers supplied by the applicant are not qualitative answers as required by, to answer these questions concerning how the requested use will not affect the adjoining areas. I mean, adjoining land is already developed neighborhood and landlocked. That's his answer, yet, and that's unquestioned. Yet, your answer is completely different as far as saying the project is exempt from SEQA and no significant impacts have identified to cause further, this finding can be made for the projects. There's no facts to base that up. So what I'm probably going to ask you on each one of these is where, based upon the applicant's answers that he submitted with this conditional use permit for approval, where do we get the qualitative answers that are required that he submitted? That's one of my questions to you. How do you, how do you do that on your staff report?
Well, one of the things we have to do in preparation of the staff report is the, and this is one of the issues that we've talked about at the ad hoc committee, that the, the answers that are requested of the applicant are based upon the findings that are need to be made for the adoption of a conditional use permit. And they, you know, they do the best they can in providing the information. And what we do in the preparation of the staff report is we, in this case, we presented the information to the Planning Commission that they need to be able to make findings that are required by the Norco Municipal Code. So it's not a straight crossover from application to resolution for approval or denial, because there are specific findings that the code requires for the adoption of a conditional use permit. And those are not necessarily the questions that are asked in the application.
Correct. But if I was in, when I sit on the Planning Commission, we never saw these either. And now I understand that now they're seeing these commission use permit applications. Just this past meeting, you had one. But the commissioners before never had this information to help them make their decision. And that's what I'm getting at, is you're taking the information that they provide, the applicant provided on these CUP applications, and you're transferring in your staff report, but I don't see any factual basis for some of the answers that are in the staff report. And I see that by, even on the questions, when we talk about change in scenic views or vistas from existing residential or public lands, there's no qualitative answer that says that. There's change in pattern, scale, or character of general area of the project. I don't see any qualitative answers on these, on these reports that was, that a planning commissioner would have had. And that's what bothers me on these is that to make a, as far as just the building, that's one thing, but there's two issues here. One's conditional use permit and the other one's the building itself. So what I'm getting at here is that I don't see where you're getting all these fat, or the information from the applicant that we would normally require on a conditional use permit. These should be qualitative answers that the applicant should be giving to you to answer these questions. One of them even, on the residential accessory structure on your site plan checklist, propose onsite circulation pattern for vehicles, pedestrians, equestrians, indicate location, dimensions, and directional arrows as needed. Even on his site map, the AKA, the animal keeping area, there is no room at all between what he has in his actual building. Where's the circulation for that? We have drainage, proposed drainage systems, any proposed change in existing drainage pattern. We have a structure that's 2,400 square feet, even though it's such a 1% slope, where's this water going behind the structure? It's not there. That's what I'm saying is, he is, the applicant has given you these answers, but they're not factual basis for what you put in the staff report. Well, I'm trying to get, where is it coming from?
Well, that's part of the problem that we've been talking about at the ad hoc committee is the conditional use permit process was not the way to go in retrospect, because back in, when we adopted this new procedure, what we needed was a public hearing process. And the only one available at the time to us was a conditional use permit, because it couldn't require a variance, it didn't meet the requirements. It wasn't a zone change and it wasn't a map. The only one that required a public hearing was, the only application that required a public hearing was a conditional use permit. Problem is, as we've talked about in the ad hoc committee, the conditional use permit application is generally for commercial uses or more intense uses. application is generally for commercial uses or more intense uses in a residential or agricultural zone. It was, they never were intended, the questions to address an accessory building on a residential lot. And so there's a disconnect there, that what, that's what we're trying to fix with the ad hoc committee.
And I, I know, I'm being on the ad hoc committee, that's what, but this was done prior to that, and I'm trying to get those kind of answers that should have been the responsibility of the applicant when this was, was presented, to either throw it back out at him and say, hey, we need more, or give them something, or at least let the planning commission members see this so they can make the decision. Because they actually did two things. They approved the accessory building and the CUP without the information, and they're based upon staff report. And I talked to two of them, and they said if they had seen this, they would have had questions, additional questions. And I, you can't, I can't change what they did.
And we do now include it.
And what, that was then, now, and that was now. And my other question is gonna be, did we actually walk this property to ensure the measurements are correct?
Yes. Alma worked directly with the, I did not, Alma did, directly with the applicant and worked at the counter in developing the site plan to make sure it was scaled and it met the measurements on the property.
Okay. And here's my, my question, and that's what I'm asking, is somebody physically check this?
Yes.
Is, we show 102 feet on the assessor's map, the width of the property, on there. And, but there's a block wall all the way around. Is that correct? Mostly, about most of it, majority of it around there. Where's the block wall at?
I, I didn't walk the property, so.
Okay, but there's a block wall. Is, if the block, even if the block wall is dead center on property line, that's no longer 102 feet wide. You have a minimum of three inches on each side on a six inch block wall. So you're gonna lose at least six inches on the measurement that you have. And I know that sounds petty, but if you look at that and you go on his AKA, which is barely making the minimum, if you were to take that, six inches off of that, he's under the need for his AKA area. That's why I'm asking, when these are turned in, have we physically checked these areas, especially when they're so close?
Yes.
As far as the measurements?
Yes.
Okay. I don't read the questions right now, staff?
Kevin, any questions to staff?
As you probably know, I spoke at length with Alma on this, and, so there's no measurements on the house. You'll note, there's no measurements. She was not certain if it was to scale when I spoke with her. You had stated, and I don't wanna give you a hard time, Steve, I really don't, but minimum standards to accessory buildings, is it the minimum standard 1812, 1813, or minimum standards per 18.45, which is inclusive of the architectural review? For example, no accessory building will have a opening more than 40% of any side of an accessory building. Clearly, we're approving buildings that do. There's a whole bunch of things in the architectural review that this violates. It's not to scale. The house isn't to scale. I don't, I disagree with you that the CUP is the problem, because I was in those hearings in 2010 that were really bloody and upsetting. We had a lot of people who, all they don't care about the city, all they wanna do is build these buildings. And they don't realize that they're devaluing every property around them, and it starts neighbor wars and all kinds of stuff. And we were guaranteed that the CUP would be the reason, the way that we would stop this. We, what we did was when we designed these buildings, they were for motorhomes, 14 feet, 864 square feet. And then all of a sudden, we're now dealing with these gigantic buildings. The findings required, I'm, I'm right there with, I had asked for these things six months ago to be given to the planning commissioners. I believe that the moment they see these applications, they'll deny them, because the applications, I've, I've now read, what, 10 of them over the last six months? And no offense to anybody, but they're just marking what they think will get through. And also, Alma told me in front of Andy that what the policy has been is that somebody fills it out, and then we help them fill out the application later. We, because it's, it's something that regular residents wouldn't know to do. Well, we're protecting the neighbors, we're not protecting, but as you know, the CUP is a special right. And so I'm really concerned that, you know, I can understand helping them at the counter, but truthfully, it's not really the applicant's fault. They should have stopped at the counter. Should have said, no, you need to have this, and this, and you need to have this, and if you have to get somebody that goes out and does an impact study for you, they have to go out and do the impact study for them. So I'm, I really am with Ted on this. I'll have some other questions later. The big one, though, is the findings required. I can find really no findings anywhere in this that would justify this building. There's no, no evaluation of the impacts whatsoever. And that's a problem for me. So that's all I have at this time right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Robin?
I don't have any questions.
Questions to staff? Before we move any further, I have a question either for the clerk or for John, since Berwin has urgency. Do we wait till he comes back?
There's no obligation for you to, but if he's gonna be back in fairly short order, it probably makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, if you, I mean, we could hear from comments by the applicant now, or-
If, if you're-
I want Berwin to be a part of it.
I was gonna say, if you're gonna wait for him, then we should recess now until he gets back, because he should hear everything that everybody has to say.
Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and recess the meeting temporarily. Okay, thank you for your patience. In all fairness to the applicant, and all the members of the audience, and to council, what I'm gonna do is I'm not gonna open the public hearing, and I'm gonna continue this item. I'm gonna ask for a motion to continue. To get back to my train of thought. A motion to continue to the next council meeting. What I feel in fairness to the applicant is that your hearing started with five members, even though we have a quorum, I think in all fairness, the correct way to be is for you to be heard by five members of council.
Council members Bash?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
John, would you make a comment? It can be. It's council meeting, we don't have to renotice or anything?
No, it's, yes, there's no renoticing. It was continued, and the, and the public hearing is continued to the next regular meeting. One of the reasons for not, I mean, I appreciate that folks have been here and probably aren't happy about it, but one of the reasons for not opening the public hearing and testing testimony now is that it, it wouldn't work for the next public hearing. We'd have to do it all over again. And you want Berwin here to hear what you have to say.
Item nine is city council, city manager, staff communications. Robin?
I don't have.
Kevin?
Unless you have somebody else, I'm wondering if, if you might be able to close tonight's meeting in memory of Shay, who passed away, Tony's daughter. Thank you.
Andy?
I have nothing.
Dad, Steve, Frank, Gina? Good. Are there any, any comments? Park under a bridge, right? I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'd like to close this meeting in memory of Tony Smith's daughter, Cheyenne. We're adjourned.